Okay, ready? All right. Good morning. Another virtual Board of Supervisors meeting. If you can all, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Supervisor Tuffinelli.
Please join me in the pledge of our great flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Is that computer not muted?
Wow. Okay. I'd like to report out the closed sessions from last week. We had one for public employee employment that was postponed till this morning. And we had a conference with the real property negotiator, Joshua Pack, regarding the price and terms of payment for the following properties affected by State Route 4, Trail Realignment Project Phase One. The county negotiators were Joshua Pack and Doak and Engineering was for Gregory Jordan and Nula Jordan, trustees for the Jordan Revocable Trust, Wendell Ender and Mary L. Ender, Stephen L. Strange and Gloria Strange, trustees for the Stephen L. and Gloria Strange Revocable Trust, Scott Frazier, Edward Titus and Arlinda Titus for the Titus Revocable Living Trust, and the Tuscanyia Ranches LP. Thank you. There was no reportable action taken. We had a conference with labor negotiator for the designated labor negotiators, Judy Hawkins and Jay Johnson, regarding the Employee Organization Service Employees International, SEIU, the Calaveras Public Safety Employees, the Calaveras Deputy Sheriff's Association, and the Calaveras Sheriff's Management Unit Board Action. There was no reportable action taken. Today, we did have a closed session regarding the Ag Commissioner, and there is no reportable action on that. And we will have one closed session after the regular agenda, a conference with legal counsel regarding initiation of litigation one case. Is there any public comment on the closed sessions? I'd like to recognize Annette Hughes, who is the acting clerk to the board this morning. She's on loan from the county's planning department and is very used to doing this for the Planning Commission. Welcome, Annette. This is no public comments? All right, seeing no public comments, I want to move to staff report. Are there any staff members who would like to make a comment to the board? Ms. Turner? I hear a laugh.
Sorry, I'm trying to get in. We're also in the scan room.
Oh.
Good morning, Board. Rebecca Turner, registrar of voters. I'm here because the Chair asked me to give an update on the ballot statistics. So, we are at 60 percent turnout so far this morning, so that is a really high turnout. Roughly 1,900 voters at the vote centers, and almost 20,000 ballots have been returned already. And unless you want additional information, then, Marita, that's all I've got. The state overall is at almost 60 percent turnout, so this is a very high turnout election.
Good. Thank you. We wish you and your staff all the best today.
Yeah, and thank you, Annette, for being there. We really appreciate it.
Sorry, do you have a question?
Oh, just a moment, Ms. Turner. Mr. Mills?
How late do you plan on working tonight?
Um, we're hoping to be out by midnight, but you never can tell.
It's a long day. Okay.
Yep.
Best to everybody who's working on this, and it's a monumental task at best. Appreciate the effort that everyone's putting in, including those that were working the vote centers.
Agreed. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other staff that have a comment they'd like to make this morning? Okay. I'd like to move to the regular agenda. Mr. Maurer or your staff, please. Item four is adopt a resolution to establish a land conservation contract for Ag Preserve 378 totaling 1,465 acres for Richard, Carla, and Romy Rolary. This is 41 parcels.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. We have three separate Ag Preserve contracts and zoning amendment proposals before you today. Each one comes with sort of a pair, the contract itself and then the zoning amendment. And so, we'll sort of discuss each one separately, but the discussion will be about both the contract and the zoning amendment associated with each proposal. And with that, I'll turn it over to Gina Catherine to make the presentation.
Yeah, but that's not this one. This is a resolution.
Gina, you're on mute.
Excuse me, just a moment.
I guess that helps.
What did you say on number four, Gary? It's a...
I have on the item is it's a public hearing.
That's for item five.
I'm looking at number four on our agenda, and it says...
Oh, mine says a resolution. Gina, could you please clarify, is item four a public hearing or is it a resolution?
Well, it's a resolution that requires a public hearing.
So, I need to open a public hearing.
So, number four, even though it's a resolution, my agenda doesn't say public hearing for number four, but it is, so I have to open it as a public hearing?
Please do.
Supervisor Callaway, if there had been some error on there, the actual establishment of a contract does not require a public hearing. The, as I understand it, I mean, you can correct me if I'm wrong, I think it's just the zoning amendment, but...
Well, I mean, the question is, is does number four require my opening a public hearing? Ms. Moss, does it yes or does it no? It's a resolution. Item five requires the public hearing.
Yes. I, go ahead, Gina.
Even the establishment of a contract requires noticing of adjacent property owners, so I would assume that that would require a public hearing, as we've always done.
No, that's fine. I mean, I can do that.
It was probably noticed.
It's just that my agenda did not say that four was a public hearing, that it was just a resolution.
Gina, in your staff report that's been posted to the website and on our agenda under WeGov, it lists as a public hearing. I don't, she's reading off our, this paper, but on the website, so I assume, because it's been posted that way and to the public that way, that it has to be now a public hearing.
Well, we were assuming it was that way all along, so that's fine with us.
I'm looking, I'm just curious. I mean, it's no big deal, but my, I'm looking at the staff report, it doesn't say public hearing on mine.
I think...
Okay, that's fine. I'll open it, it's not gonna, we're not dying on the vine on this puppy. Okay. So, we're going to, let me open the public hearing on item four and adopt a resolution to establish the land conservation Ag Preserve Number 378 totaling 1,468 acres for Richard, Carla, and Romy Rolary. This is 41 acres. Gina, did you want to proceed on this?
Yes, please. Okay. So, Richard, Carla, and Romy Rolary filed a California Land Conservation Contract application to establish Agriculture Preserve Contract 378 for a total of 1,465.35 acres of land comprised of 41 assessor parcels and 32 legal parcels. The ranch is located east of Shrouder Mine Road, lying north of the City of Angels, encumbering both the west and the east side of Murphy's Grade Road from south, all the way from Murphy's Grade Road to State Route 4, just this side of Six Mile Road. The property has been in agricultural production for many years. In 1996, the Rolary family planted 18 and a half acres of grapes, yielding 3 tons per acre, with a gross annual income of $83,250. Additional agriculture production on the land includes 125 head of beef cattle, being grazed on 34 acres of irrigated pasture, with the balance of the ranch being utilized for its dry pasture grazing. The cattle operation has a gross annual income of $1,009,375,000. Scott Onetto is our Calaveras County Farm Advisor. He completed a feasibility study for the subject property, primarily utilized as livestock grazing. His study estimated the land is capable of producing an annual gross income of $54.45 per acre, confirming the land's viable agriculture land. Reported annual income from production far exceeding the minimum $2,000 annual income requirement for eligibility for the agriculture preserve. Cal Fire identifies this property of the portion of the county as being in a very high fire hazard. Maintaining this land in agriculture will minimize the exposure of people and structures to the risk of wildfires. The California Natural Diversity Database identifies a sighting of three protected species within a two-mile radius of the subject property. Policies of the Conservation and Open Space Element of the General Plan encourage open space for the preservation of natural resources such as wildlife habitat, in addition to the managed production of resources, which includes rangeland and agricultural lands alike. The preservation of lands for purposes of protecting wildlife habitat and agricultural production are compatible. With one established well, the property is traversed by multiple blue line streams, including Juniper Ditch, tributaries to French Gulch and Angels Creek, all of which provide a water source for the agricultural operations. The General Plan designations for the property within the proposed preserve is resource production and rural residential. The resource production designation identifies lands capable and primarily used for agriculture operations, timber production, and mineral resource production, with the Ag Preserve zoning being consistent. The rural residential zone also finds the Ag Preserve zoning consistent and compatible. Finally, this application has been considered by your board-appointed Ag Advisory Committee and your Planning Commission, and they support the establishment of this contract for the Rolarys. In addition, the establishment of open space contracts under the Williamson Act is categorically exempt from CEQA, and a notice of exemption has been prepared.
Okay. Are there any questions? Mr. Mills? Nothing? Any questions? No. Mr. Stopper? No. Are there any public comments? Ms. Hughes? Okay. No public comments. I'd like to bring it back to the board for action, and I will close the public hearing. Mr. Mills?
Madam Chair, I'll make the motion to approve or adopt the resolution to establish the land conservation contract and preserve.
Okay. A second, please.
Ms. Callaway, I would like to second that.
Motion by Supervisor Mills, second by Supervisor Stopper. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes on a 401 absent. For the record, Supervisor Guaramendi will not be with us this week. Okay, thank you. I'd like to go to item five. This is a public hearing, to adopt an ordinance approving the zoning amendment from unclassified and highway service to Ag Preserve for the 41 parcels for, and as part of the Ag Preserve and Williamson Act, Contract 378 for Richard, Carla, and Romy Rolary, and then authorize publication of a brief property description. I'd like to open the public hearing on this. Again, Gina, could you proceed, please?
Sure. Yeah. So, this is the second half of the contract proposal. So, now that we've established the contract for the Rolarys, all of the properties included in that contract must be zoned appropriately, which is Ag Preserve, which obviously identifies all those parcels, all 41 of those assessor parcels, as being restricted by the Williamson Act. So, the recommendation is to rezone all 41, which they're referenced in the report, and I'm not going to repeat each and every assessor parcel number, but all total 41 assessor parcels from the current unclassified and highway service zoning to the Ag Preserve zone, identifying all of those properties as being an established Ag Preserve under the Williamson Act.
All right. There any questions from the board? Any comments on this? Are there any public comments on this item? No? All right. Seeing no public comments on this ordinance, I'd like to bring it, close the public hearing and bring it back to the board. May I have a motion on adopting the ordinance amending the zoning of the 41 assessor parcels from unclassified and highway service to Ag Preserve to recognize the Ag Preserve Williamson Act Contract 378 for Richard, Carla, and Romy Rolary?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make the motion to adopt the ordinance approving the zoning amendment.
Thank you, Supervisor Mills. May I have a second?
I'll second, Madam Chair.
Second from Supervisor Tuffinelli. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes on a 401 absent. Thank you. Okay, let's move to item eight.
No. Six.
That's what I said. I need some chocolate. Thank you. Item six. Mr. Tuffinelli, is this a public hearing? One, two, please?
It is a public hearing.
Want to make sure I get this right.
Says yes.
I know, I saw it, but I just thought I'd let Supervisor Tuffinelli make sure I stay on the...
Well, you were jumping to eight, so I didn't know if you...
Yeah, well, I know, it's one of those days. Okay, we're on item number six. This is also a public hearing, to adopt a resolution to disestablish the land conservation contract, Ag Preserve 351, and establish a land conservation contract, Ag Preserve 379, totaling 206 acres for Anthony and Lana Tressi. Ms. Hughes, did I pronounce that correctly? Thank you. I'd like to open the public hearing. Colleagues, do you have any questions or comments you have on this item? Gina, could you present it to us, please?
Yes. So, this application is actually to add 9.94 acres to an existing preserve totaling 206.09 acres of land, which is located at 19600 Potter Off Road, approximately 3/4 of a mile north of the intersection of Jesus Maria and Baker Riley Way. Just before the establishment of Contract 351 for the Tressis, the property was impacted by the Butte Fire, destroying fences, multiple structures on the property. Since 2015, the Tressis have rebuilt their little ranch and have reported an annual income from their agricultural production exceeding the minimum $2,000 requirement. Today, their ag operation has grown and now includes 38 sheep, five goats, and four cows, which produces an average of $6,091 annually. Scott Onetto, County Farm Advisor, completed a feasibility study confirming the land is capable of producing incomes from agriculture exceeding the minimum requirements for eligibility of the Ag Preserve. Cal Fire does identify this property as being in a very high fire hazard. Of course, grazing livestock and managing the land for optimum grazing pastures will reduce flammable vegetation. Entering the land into the Ag Preserve ensures long-term agricultural production and limits the land's residential development potential, thus minimizing the exposure of people and structures to the risk of wildfires. California Natural Diversity Database identifies a sighting of two protected species within a two-mile radius. Policies of the Conservation and Open Space Element of the General Plan encourage open space for the preservation of natural resources such as wildlife habitat, in addition to managed protection, production of resources, which include rangeland and agricultural land. The preservation of lands for this purpose, protecting wildlife habitat and agricultural production, are compatible. With three established wells, the property is traversed by Esperanza Creek, and provides, which provides a water source for the livestock operation. Under the land's existing contract is designated by the General Plan as resource production and working land, which are both consistent with the Ag Preserve zoning. Your Board of Supervisors-appointed Ag Advisory Committee and Planning Commission both support the establishment of this new contract. The establishment of an open space contract under the Williamson Act is categorically exempt from CEQA, and a notice of exemption will be prepared.
Do the board members have any questions or comments they'd like to make on this item? Are there any public comments on the resolution to disestablish the boundary of Ag Preserve 351 and simultaneously establishing the Ag Preserve 379? Okay. Being that there's no public comments, I'd like to bring it back to the board for action and close the public hearing. May I have a motion from the board?
I'll move to the side of Madam Chair.
A motion by Supervisor Tuffinelli, a second by...
Second.
Supervisor Stopper. I saw his red light, so I thought, well, that's good enough for me. Second by Supervisor Stopper. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes on a 401 absent vote of the board. Thank you.
You'd be able to switch this red light to a green light.
I'd like to move to item seven. Again, this is a public hearing, to adopt an ordinance approving the zoning amendment from unclassified and Ag Preserve as part of the Ag Preserve Williamson Act Contract 379 for Anthony and Lana Tressi, and authorize the publication of the brief description. I've opened the public hearings. Gina, did you have comments? Thank you.
Yeah, just shortly. So, the majority of the land already being under contract is already zoned Ag Preserve. We're only needing to zone the one nine-plus-acre parcel that's been, that has been added to the existing preserve. So, our recommendation is to rezone APN 20-013-011 from unclassified to Ag Preserve AP, identifying this property as being under an established Ag Preserve contract.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions from the board? Are there any comments or questions from the public? Seeing no comments, our questions from the public, I want to close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for action. May I have a motion on this?
So moved, Madam Chair.
A motion from Supervisor Stopper, and a second...
I'll second.
From Supervisor Tuffinelli. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes on a 401 absent vote. Move to item eight. This also is a public hearing, to adopt a resolution, excuse me, a resolution to establish the land conservation contract, Ag Preserve Number 380, totaling 1,087 acres for William and Dolores Arrola, trustees of the Arrola 2015 Revocable Trust dated March 5, 2015. So, I'm opening the public hearing. Ms. Kavka, do you have comments you want to make on this, please?
So, yeah, the last and final contract is for William and Dolores Arrola. They filed their California Land Conservation Contract application to establish Agriculture Preserve Contract Number 380 for a total of 1,087.32 acres of land comprised of five assessor parcels. Formerly known as the Brower Ranch, is located approximately 1 and 1/2 miles west of the State Route 4 and 49 intersection in Angels Camp, lying approximately 1.1 3/4 miles south of State Highway 4, west of Army Corps of Engineers and New Malinas Reservoir. This property has been in agricultural production for many years, most recently the Whittle Ranches leased the property utilizing the pastures for cattle grazing. With the expiration of their lease agreement, the Arrolas will now run 100 cow calf pair on the land, continuing to utilize the land for its quality grazing. The gross annual income from their cattle production is estimated at $45,000. Scott Onetto completed a feasibility study on the subject property. His study estimates the land is capable of producing an annual gross income of $29.29 per acre, confirming the land is viable agricultural land. Both indicate the production of this land is capable of exceeding the minimum $2,000 annual requirement for eligibility of the Ag Preserve. This, as many other properties in our county, is designated by Cal Fire as being a very high fire hazard. Maintaining this land in agriculture will minimize the exposure of people and structures to the risk of wildfires. The California Natural Diversity Database identifies a sighting of three protected species within a two-mile radius... species within a two-mile radius. Policies of the Conservation and Open Space Element of the General Plan encourage the open space preservation of natural resources such as, obviously, wildlife habitat, in addition to managed production of resources, which includes rangeland and agricultural land. There is one developed spring in addition to the property being traversed by multiple Blue Line streams, including Thompson Creek, Brower Creek, and tributaries to Angels Creek, all of which provide water source to the livestock operation. The General Plan designates this land within the proposed preserve as resource production. The resource production designation identifies those lands capable of and primarily used for agricultural operations, timber production, and/or mineral resource production, with the Ag Preserve zoning being consistent. Finally, your Board of Supervisors-appointed Ag Advisory Committee and Planning Commission both support the establishment of Contract 380 for the Arrolas.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments for Ms. Kavka? Are there any public comments or questions on this item? Seeing no public... Mr. Mills?
No.
Oh, okay. Seeing no public comments, I want to bring it back to the board, close the public hearing. Gina, you've done an awesome job on these. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I mean, I know your experience, but you really do a good job. We appreciate it. May I have a motion, please? Mr. Mills?
Madam Chair, I move to adopt a resolution to establish a California Land Conservation Contract and Ag Preserve Number 380.
Thank you. And a second?
All second.
A second from Supervisor Tuffinelli. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes on a 401 absent vote. Thank you. Again, Ms. Kavka, thank you very much for your work on this.
Gina, good job. Thank you.
Okay. I'm... Oh.
You got number nine?
Yeah, we have a number...
One more.
Pardon?
Nine.
Oh.
Number nine.
Yeah, you got one more.
We have the ordinance.
Got it. Okay. Thank you. All right. We can go to item nine, a public hearing adopting the ordinance approving the zoning amendment and from general ag to ag preserve and recognizing the one, two, five properties?
Yes.
Yes. And the five parcels as part of the Ag Preserve and Williamson Act Contract 380 for William and Dolores Arrola, and authorize the publication thereof. I want to open the public hearing again. Gina, please proceed.
So, again, just as before, in order to identify these properties that you just entered into an Ag Preserve contract, we need to zone them appropriately. And being that none of them were previously under contract, all five assessor parcels need to be rezoned from the current A1, general agriculture zoning, to AP, agriculture preserves, signifying the properties are restricted by contract under the Williamson Act.
Are there any questions or comments from the board on this? Mr. Stopper?
Just to follow up on Madam Chair's comments earlier, you know, how fast we're going through these right now gives no justice to the amount of work that goes into them, and I just want to thank you, Gina, and the entire planning department for everything that goes into this as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
And the general fund pays for their time? It's just a little editorial. Are there... If there's no questions or comments from the board, I'd like to ask if there are any public comments on this item? Thank you, Ms. Hughes. I'd like to bring it back to the board for action, close the public hearing. I'll entertain a motion, please.
Yes, Madam Chair, I'll move to adopt ordinance approving the zoning amendment.
And a second?
Second, Madam Chair.
A second from Supervisor Stopper. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes on a 401 absent vote of the board. Thank you, Gina.
Thank you. Hope everyone has a great election day.
Like your scarf.
Thank you.
Thank you, members of the board.
Thank you, Mr. Mauer.
Like your scarf, too, Peter.
My news.
Mr. Mauer, I appreciate your picture of Copperopolis there in the background.
Thank you. After being criticized for not having one locally, I found a good one for Calaveras County.
Thank you. All right. We're going to move to item 10, a presentation from Mountain Valley EMS. Mr. Alderstaff, do we need to take a break for any reason?
Madam Chair, I can't see if Mr. Doyle is in the Zoom meeting. The presentation has been provided to the board in advance and was available for public review as well, so with that, I don't know that staff needs any more introduction of the item.
Okay. Thank you. Let's move to item 10, a presentation from Mountain Valley EMS regarding the request for proposal for emergency medical services for certain zones within the county. Mr. Doyle, thank you. Welcome to the board.
Good morning. Happy Election Day.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. I wanted to come today to...
Could you just introduce yourself to the record?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm the Mountain Valley EMS Agency. I'm the executive director.
Thank you.
I wanted to bring an update today on our progress, rather lengthy. I think this all went on a little bit longer than we thought, but we are finally at a stage where we're ready to bring in an update to the board. So, thank you, Chairperson Callaway, members of the board, staff. In 2014, the EMS Agency, Mountain Valley EMS, conducted a request for proposal process resulting in a five-year agreement with American Legion Ambulance and Ebbets Pass Fire District. Those agreements term on June 30, 2020, thus necessitating the need for an RFP process, request for proposals process. I'd like to briefly review the RFP development for the board, followed by both the initial RFP as well as the second revised RFP. The Mountain Valley EMS Agency contracted with Endpoint EMS Consulting for assistance in the development of the initial Calaveras County request for proposals. I'm not seeing it, actually. Do we have a presentation?
We have it. I'm assuming... Mr. Mills, do you have it? I'm... No. Do you have it? Yeah. So, I'm not sure if we can get it up there. Okay. Thank you.
Will Mr. Alder... Are you sharing it?
Well, I thought Robin was. But... Mr. Ald...
Yes, ma'am.
We can't see the presentation up on the screen. Is there a way that you can, or...
It will take me a moment to put it on the jump drive.
Why don't we proceed?
The first couple of slides are review.
That's fine. Well, let's just proceed, and if we can, we can.
Great. So, as I had mentioned, we had contracted with Endpoint EMS Consulting for development of the request for proposals. The principals at Endpoint EMS Consulting have over 50 years of EMS experience, both in the local EMS agency side of the business as well as at the local provider level in executive management. Endpoint came highly recommended by my EMS counterparts throughout the state, resulting in the EMS agency hiring Endpoint to conduct our request for proposals in Stanislaus County in 2019. We were very happy with their performance. We conducted a very intricate and extensive EMS system redesign in Stanislaus County. We had multiple bids. The process was run transparently and fairly, and we were able to select a provider after multiple proposals were submitted with no contest of the proposal and the award, which nowadays is a pretty big thing. RFP proposals for ground ambulance service tend to be contested on a fairly regular basis. So, we were very happy with the fact that we had a very extensive proposal process, and we came through without any contestation. Throughout the process here in Stanislaus County, Endpoint and EMS Agency worked together to meet with stakeholders, meet with the executive board throughout the county to develop what we felt were important components to the EMS system, as well as to discover what we're doing really well. All stakeholders were interviewed. We had multiple focus groups, and we have got some very good information out of our focus groups. Some of the strengths of the current EMS system, current system's generally performing very well. All stakeholders interviewed had positive comments regarding the current providers, as well as the system design and integration with their individual agencies. All stakeholders had made mention that they felt comfortable and confident the current contractors provided professional service and are dedicated to the citizens of Calaveras County. The clinical care provided by to our citizens meets or exceeds industry standards. Both providers have extensive clinical quality assurance processes and provide education to their employees as well as the public on a regular basis. All stakeholders reiterated the strong partnerships they've developed with the current providers. All have an open line of communication with management and feel that concerns are addressed quickly and appropriately. And lastly, system stakeholders express openness to change and improvements in the current EMS delivery model. While all agreed our current EMS systems work well, we did identify some challenges within the current system that we addressed in the new request for proposals. Some of these challenges are long out-of-county transport times. Approximately 50% of the calls originating in Calaveras County get transported to a neighboring county, whether that's Tuolumne or Amador, or down to the valley. A closest ambulance is not always dispatch. We don't have visibility at the dispatch level integrated into the dispatch software to necessarily know exactly where an ambulance is when they return into the county. Employee retention is always an issue in EMS and can be compounded in our rural environments just because of proximity and generally the labor pool is a little bit smaller to choose from. Agent equipment in ambulances with no hydraulic gurneys, while both providers do have... did have a robust replacement process and mapping, it still is an issue when you have no limited revenue within the county to replace what becomes very expensive equipment. Our response zones and response times needed updating. We had a blanket 20 minutes in the north and south zone and 13 minutes in the east zone as a response time, regardless if it was, say, downtown San Andreas or up at the Alpine Calaveras County line. So, we needed to update our response model. Financial sustainability is an issue in every EMS system and is only compounded in the smaller rural systems. Oh, there we go. I'm on slide four, I believe. Here we go. Thank you. Lack of consistent data for decision-making. We currently relied, and when this RFP was developed, we relied on self-reporting of both clinical data as well as response time data. That was the industry standard years ago. The bar has been moved significantly towards the use of third-party verified surveillance software vendors. Dispatch radio coverage issues. Again, we're in a rural environment. The use of dispatch radios is difficult sometimes, depending where in the county you are, so we have to rely on backup systems like cell phones or, as we'll see in the RFP, mobile data terminals. And then urban islands. We talked about this the last time. Again, being a rural county, there are instances where we have pockets of rural... or, excuse me, of urban population that are far removed from other population centers. The obvious ones are Copperopolis, West Point area, Dorrington up the hill, and those are very challenging to address, but we have some ideas and changes to the new program that might help. Next slide, please. Based on the challenges discovered through the stakeholder meetings and system analysis, a select few high-impact system enhancements have been written into the RFP. We believe these fiscally responsible enhancements will go a long way towards bringing the Calaveras EMS system in line with current industry standards. In fact, when implemented, these enhancements will provide a modern EMS system with expanded oversight that exceeds many larger urban systems. Mountain Valley EMS has developed population-density-based response maps with the National Grid System overlay, which is the current industry standard. This will allow for appropriate population-density-based urban, suburban, rural, and wilderness response time standards, going away from the 20 minutes or 13 minutes within the whole zone. Calaveras County Sheriff's Office has agreed to offer its current automatic vehicle locator program access to the winning proposer. This technology, in addition to the requirements for mobile data, will allow computerized dispatch of ambulances, reducing phone time for sheriff's department dispatchers, allow for the closest unit to be dispatched, and enable the responding ambulance crew to see any dispatch notes prior to arrival, thus streamlining the dispatch process. This will also help address some of the communication and radio issues we see within the county. Mountain Valley is requiring participation in the First Watch, online compliance utility, and first-pass clinical surveillance with the new EMS contracts. This allows for third-party verified compliance and clinical reporting. This is the industry standard now. Copperopolis Fire Protection District has committed to continue to provide paramedic-level first response within its fire district, and we encourage any proposers to develop a fee-for-service response agreement with this and possibly other future advanced life support fire agencies, specifically those agencies that serve these urban islands, which we talked about. The agreement resulting from this RFP is a five-year term with the option to extend for an additional five years. We believe a long-term contract is, first of all, the standard within the EMS industry, but encourages investment by the winning provider into the system, both in terms of equipment and possibly stations, posting areas, things like that, land. Okay. So, to bring us up to speed, next slide, please. Early this year, as we all know, Mountain Valley conducted an initial RFP process for all three exclusive operating areas within the county. That would be the north, the south, and the east zones. That process resulted in one qualified proposer for the east zone with subsequent award and contracting. That provider, as we know, is Ebbets Pass Fire District, and they began service under the new agreement on July 1 of this year. That same process resulted in one letter of intent to bid for the north and south zones, however, did not result in a qualified proposal. As a standard industry practice, Endpoint Consulting EMS conducted debriefs with the non-responsive interested party in order to identify reasons the party did not submit a proposal. The county leadership group was then reconvened in order to develop... The county leadership group was then reconvened in order to develop a strategy for the north and south zones, which resulted in a revised RFP, as well as a contract extension with the current ambulance provider in order for us to conduct this process. There are five key, high-impact revisions to the first RFP to bring us into where we are today with the second RFP. We revised response zone mapping to more accurately reflect the urban, suburban, rural, and wilderness boundaries. We were able to find new GIS mapping that allowed us to drill down much closer than the original mapping, which gave us more, much more accurate boundaries around each population-density zone. Suburban and rural response times were amended due to these mapping changes. Two minutes were added to urban responses, allowing proposers to meet response times in the south zone, as well as the far east areas of Valley Springs. Okay? With the new mapping, again, because we were able to zoom in much closer, we realized that the initial response times in the first RFP, based on where most, made most sense to post your ambulances, we would not make those response times in some of those outlying areas, and thus setting up the provider for failure and significant fines. Response times for the proposed ALS fire first responses in Copropolis was decreased by two minutes in all of the zones. In discussions with Copper Fire, we realized that we could actually shorten the response time within their response area, allowing them a comfortable amount of time to make it to those calls. All of these response times are still six minutes shorter than the current 20-minute response time. Even after our modifications, in the urban areas, the response times are still six minutes This change for proposers to meet response time standard, excuse me, this allows them to meet those standards, as we already discussed, from where it makes sense for them to post an ambulance. We increased the ambulance mileage limit from 250,000 to 300,000 miles. Again, because 50% roughly of our transports go out-of-county, our ambulances put on miles very quickly. The liquidated damages or response time fines for response time noncompliance were reduced, bringing them in line with our other rural contracts within the Mountain Valley region. And then lastly, we provided clarifying language regarding the cost and structure of the encouraged first responder program in Copropolis. There was some, there was some concerns about how we had written the original wording around the Copper Fire first responder agreement, so we made some clarifying changes to that. Next slide, please. This is the new response time matrix. Again, urban code three responses were increased by two minutes, and then the first responder agreement for Copper, those urban response times were actually decreased by two minutes. Next slide, please. So, some milestones. The revised request for proposals for the north and south zone was released on June 12th after a couple-month delay due to the COVID pandemic. We were prepared to release earlier, but in speaking with my counterparts throughout the state and then multiple providers, it was determined that it was probably not the right time to release the RFP, and we probably would not have been successful in receiving any proposals. So, we delayed it by a few months. The agency received four letters of intent to submit proposals by the July 8th deadline. Proposals were due on October 19th, where we received two qualified proposals. Proposals were reviewed for minimum qualifications by the EMS agency, and both were forwarded to the Proposal Review Committee on October 20th. Oral presentations were conducted last Friday on October 30th by both proposers. So, I'd like to talk about the Proposal Review Committee and process here just for a minute. The two qualified proposals were reviewed and scored by experienced, independent, highly-qualified review committee consisting of a, we had five members. One is a current fire warden and former EMS administrator. One is a former EMS agency and current fire-based medical director. We had a current rural public health officer. We had a current trauma program manager with extensive EMS experience. And then we had a current EMS administrator. So, a pretty wide collection of expertise, very similar to the structure we used in the Stanislaus County Proposal Review. The financial review was conducted by a certified public accountant, experienced in request for proposal, financial analysis, EMS financial modeling, and EMS economics. We've used this individual now multiple times for RFP financial analysis, as well as some of the applications we receive for non-emergency transport. Lastly, no member of the Policy Review Committee works or resides within Calaveras County. None have an affiliation with Mountain Valley or a contract, a conflict of interest with either proposed, either provider that submitted proposals. Next slide, please. Both proposals were reviewed and scored independently by each committee member. After review, after reviewing member's scores, were sent to Mountain Valley for initial tabulation. On October 30th, each proposer was allowed one hour for an oral presentation to the policy review, excuse me, the Proposal Review Committee, after which time the committee members were allowed time to ask questions. Committee members were given time to finalize their scores, after which a recommendation for award was made to the Mountain Valley EMS Executive Director. After receipt of the recommendation, Mountain Valley will notice the intent to award, and the JPA Board will then approve the final award. So, that's the process we went through. Next slide, please. This is a sample of the scoring matrix. Each proposal was scored on, I believe it's 11 different categories. This was contained in the RFP, so each proposer had access to this and knew how they were going to be scored. Next slide, please. So, where do we go from here? After recommendation from the Proposal Review Committee, the agency is scheduled to notice of intent to award on November 6th, Friday of this week. Award approval by the Mountain Valley JPA Board is scheduled for a special meeting on November 16th, and then contract negotiations will commence immediately afterwards with implementation of the new contract on June 1st, 2021. And lastly, thank you for your time. I can answer questions. Unfortunately, I'm unable to discuss specific elements of any individual proposal as we are still in the procurement process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Doyle. Mr. Mills?
Yes, this has been a long, arduous affair for a lot of people, and a lot of effort has been put in to try to find what is the most common ground or the best way to do this, and I'm sure that there will be some discussions about better ways in the future. Whoever gets awarded the contract, will they be able to start implementing earlier than the June 1 deadline, or do they need to just simply be putting themselves together for that time?
No, so they can prepare, they could, there's elements within the RFP that will take some investment, some purchasing of equipment, and they can start that as soon as they're awarded, or most likely once the contract is signed, but the service does not begin until June 1st. We have a current extension with the current provider through May 31st.
I just wanted that question out there for clarity, be sure everybody understood it. Again, appreciate so much all of even the reviews that had taken place on this, especially with Endpoint and their expertise in helping to try to find those areas that we might be able to make some improvements or changes on, and hopefully it will result in a better delivery system for us and the county here in the future. Like, thinking five years, but I'm thinking more 10. So, let's, let's get this over with and let's move on.
Mr. Tuffinelli, you're also on the EMS board. Do you have any questions or comments?
No, I don't. It's been, Dennis is correct, it's been a long time. I do have a question on the Review Committee, though. You made a statement that none of these members, the five members that were on that committee, had anything to do with Mountain Valley EMS, or had business or lived in Calaveras County?
No, I believe so. There's no Mountain Valley employees that are on the Policy Review Committee. There's nobody that's on the Review Committee that has a current affiliation. I'm thinking specifically medical director because they're in the contract. As far as living in Calaveras County, I don't believe anyone lived in Calaveras County. We worked really hard to make it an independent third party. We did replace one person as we looked through the process, again, just for transparency and making sure we had an impartial.
And the CPA was completely separate from any Mountain Valley?
Yes. So, the CPA was, we pulled out the financial analysis from the Policy Review Committee, and we sent that to the CPA to score independently of the Policy Review Committee.
One other question was the oral presentations on October 30th last Friday. Was that open to the public?
No, it's not a public.
It's not? Okay. I just wanted to clarify.
Yes. The Policy Review Committee was there, Endpoint Communications was there to facilitate, and then I was there as an observer with no input.
Thank you.
Mr. Stopper?
You brought up the current providers has an extension going through May 31st, potentially giving, opening for June 1st. Is there an opportunity for that provider to back out of that extension in any way?
The only opportunity to back out the, well, there would be normal notice, which I would need to look in the contract, but I believe it's nine days.
Ninety days?
I believe. I would have to get back to you on that.
That's good enough.
However, there are no, the only additional mechanism to get out of the contract is, so backing up, when we, when we extended the original contract, the state, who has to approve all of these processes, did not allow us to extend the exclusive operating area. So, as soon as we went to an extension, which would have been July 1st, this became an open operating area, which means if we, as the EMS agency, received an application from, you know, another ambulance provider, and they qualified and wanted to do business in Amador County, excuse me, Calaveras County, that would be allowable. And what would generally happen is you would split the calls. So, one would go to the current provider, and one would go to the other provider, and back and forth. What that does, in effect, is cuts the number of calls, it doubles the revenue we have for the county. It was requested, and I thought it was a reasonable request, as did our board, that there was language in there that if a provider during the extension period only, if another provider was brought into the county and it had a negative financial impact on the current provider, that they could serve notice.
Okay, that's, I think that's explained better than I understood it prior. So, at the point where if it's financially viable, they will proceed. But if another, let's say, for instance, a different provider were brought in on the RFP and weren't to start till the June 1st, then they wouldn't be splitting the cost, and then there is no legal way they could back out of that until June 1st, as long as the other provider wasn't providing?
Yes. So, let me back up. Any provider that would start prior to June 1st would need to apply and be approved through us.
Right.
Which that process takes some time. We're really addressing that gap.
Right. No, excellent. That's a very good explanation. I appreciate that.
And I did have, as a side note, I've had multiple conversations with the current provider, who's expressed zero intent in going anywhere. He, and I understand, he just needed a way to reevaluate if all of a sudden his business is coming out.
Understood.
I had conversations with the current provider, and he did tell me that they had no intent of pulling out of Calaveras County. They fully intended to honor his contract extension.
Couple other things, just for, some questions for clarity here. You have on your strengths here, system stakeholders are open to system changes to improve the system. And then we go on to challenges, and response zones and times, you made response zones and times, well, response zones and times needed updating because of the actual gap in the ability to respond in certain zones, or vice versa. You know, you're able to...
Get there quicker.
Get there quicker in Copropolis area, for example. And then you went on to the RFP system enhancements. I'm, I'm just, the ambulance response time slide, a little bit of a hard time following. I mean, you did, so let's just simplify it. The Copropolis area, you were able to bring it down by two minutes. You said the rest of the areas, you brought it up, in the urban areas by two minutes. But we have, we also have rural, suburban, and wilderness areas. I mean, I understand the wilderness, it's, certain areas, some of the roads in Calaveras County, as soon as possible is understandable, you know, having lived out some of those roads in the past. But the rural, the rural response times, you know, are significant, 27 minutes, 37 minutes. I'm just, I'm trying to follow this graph you have here, and, excuse me, I just have a hard time understanding it, so could you explain it to me?
Absolutely. So, let's cover the without an ALS first response first. This is 95% of the county, right? Everywhere but Copropolis, right? So, and I'm going to use the Highway 4 as an example, because that's where I live, and I can not, I can speak offhand. So, we have an urban area, which is high population density, let's say downtown Arnold, okay? That has a 13-minute and 59-second response time. So, anywhere within that urban area, the responder has to be there within that timeframe, okay? And then we, let's say, go up Highway 4 a little bit, and we have population densities drop, and that would be a suburban area. That's usually the outskirts of, say, your urban, okay? Like, let's say, the outskirts between Angels Camp and San Andreas. And I apologize, I could, I should have brought a map, it might have been more helpful. I could email you the map as well. Those have a little bit longer response time because we can't post ambulances in places that don't have a lot of calls, because that's, just doesn't really make sense, right?
Cost benefit.
Yeah. And then we have, so if we kept going further up Highway 4, then we get into the rural area, okay, which again has, I want to say, less than 50, maybe 30, population per square mile, okay? Takes longer to get there, down dirt roads, things like that. And then we have the wilderness, right? Which if we use the Highway 4 example, is pretty much anything up towards the county line before we get to Bear Valley, and that's your best effort. Most of the time, or a lot of the time, especially in this county, you're having to go off the road, you know, we all know.
Let me break down my question a little farther. So, you have three segments here, and I understand going down, that, that makes perfect sense, but we go to ALS, ALS fire first responder agreement, and that time is reduced significantly. And then we go to ambulance with fire agreement, and then the time... ambulance with fire agreement, and then the time goes up considerably. So that's, that's where I'm looking.
Perfect. So this is a system that we built and implemented in Stanislaus County, where we, in, in more urban areas, you can't financially put a ambulance on every street corner like we used to. The financial model just doesn't work. So our philosophy is, we need to look at EMS as an integrated system. We brought fire in, we have paramedic level fire departments, as well as the EMT level fire departments. We brought them into the response model and made them contractually responsible for a response time, which is one of the first times that's happened, right? They agreed to, okay, I can get to a call in an urban area in seven minutes. Great. You're there with a paramedic in seven minutes. We met with our medical director and said, okay, if I have a paramedic on scene, they can't transport, but they're on scene in seven minutes, how much longer are you comfortable before we have a transporting unit there? And his answer was, in the, in the urban areas in the Desto, four minutes, right? So we have a patient receiving paramedic level care, the same care they would have gotten with an ambulance, and that just gives the ambulance a little bit more time to get there, to help with, um, distributing the ambulances throughout the system a little bit better. So we took that model to Copperopolis Fire, who had indicated that, yeah, we'd love to be able to, to get a little compensation, and more importantly, be part of the EMS system. So I met with, um, Joel, the chief down there, when we first developed the first RFP, and said, okay, let's look at the response area. What's your comfort level with a response time? How quickly can you get to the calls in the majority of your area? And I believe at the time, they threw out eight or nine minutes, maybe? Um, so the first RFP we wrote in, I think we gave them 11:59, which was still much quicker than the 20 minutes that is in the current agreement. And again, the same philosophy. We already have a paramedic doing all of the ALS stuff with the patient, and it gives the ambulance the ability to get to that call and still be compliant and not approve fines, because it's just not economically realistic to put a full-time paramedic, ambulance in, again, we're talking about copper, in copper. So we're sharing that response, if you will, with the fire department. So in the subsequent response model, we brought that down to 10 minutes, again, which is very reasonable.
That, much better. It's much clearer to me now. Thank you.
Mr. Mills?
Lance, I'd like to just add to what you just said, too, is Copperopolis, those people are paying through Measure C for the additional benefit of having paramedics in their ambulance, in their fire system. Uh, they paid, to some degree, a lot of cash for that. So, uh, the only thing that they don't do right now is transport. That's literally where their, their hangup is. Uh, but that's their option to do that. They can make that application and, and change that if they want to do that. They haven't decided they want it to. So it's a unique bird. I'm sure throughout your whole system, it's a unique bird.
It is.
Because of the way it's financed.
Well, we, but we encourage the, the higher, in these rural areas, I mean, you know, it's great to have ALS, or even advanced EMT first responders, because it's just, the economics don't allow you to get there as quickly in every case.
I know it would be helpful, have been helpful in this conversation, would have been a map.
Yes.
To actually show, to show all those little, uh, squares, and show exactly what those time windows were for those squares, and identifying truly what is urban and rural, and how, how does that fit?
And I'll share that with this board as soon as I can.
Yeah. It's, it's a very, very good map, and I know you spent a lot of time putting that together, so it helped to explain.
Personally, we have a GAS guy now.
Yeah. But it's, it's a very helpful tool to understanding what the challenges are regarding the time windows, and the response times that have been created, and why they're created the way they are. So, I just wanted to make the point.
One point of clarification on this response time, um, this really applies if we have a non-fire-based proposer, right? The fire-based proposer can propose however they want.
Understood.
And they could utilize the same thing.
Um, you know, knowing that, you know, we got a couple of different people putting in for the RFP process, uh, you know, and with Copperopolis being its own bird, um, the understanding is, uh, paramedics or, or high-level EMTs at other departments aren't necessarily able to do what they're allowed, what they're educated to do unless you license them through, 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 through your, your JPA.
So, um, the short answer is yes. Um, the way that works is, and I'll just use my personal example. I've worked up at Bear Valley, used to work up at Bear, Bear Valley for many years, in the paramedic, in the medic room. Um, I'm a paramedic, but I am only allowed to work at an EMT level of scope, because Bear Valley is not an ALS-approved provider. So we'll take that to pick a fire agency, well, Copper Fire. They say, we want to be an ALS, we want our paramedics who might work elsewhere to be able to be a paramedic when they're here. Fantastic. We need to make the whole department an ALS-approved provider. And we can do that in baby steps. We don't have to do the whole department. In, in Stanislaus County, we have, um, one that has three stations, and they just start with one. And then hopefully they can go to two, and go to three. But the department needs to be an ALS provider.
Right. So there is that possible opportunity in the future, even without the measure that Copperopolis has, that other departments could possibly come in underneath that umbrella?
Absolutely. We encourage that. And that's one of the, um, and, and, I know Supervisor Garaman, he's not here, but that was one of his concerns early on in the process, is how can we improve service to these urban islands?
Right.
And we have other ways, as we get into, um, you know, working with whoever the provider might be, of grants and things like that, where we might be able to push some of the higher level of care closer out to those areas.
And, and the reason I bring this up, and it's been related by, uh, other people in the room, is in the past, there's instances where, you know, it's, we'll, we'll just call it a perfect storm. All the ambulances are busy with one situation or another. We have, we have a fire crew on scene, and their hands are tied to the level of their ability to provide a service that they may be educated on, but can't do it legally. So I just, I just, that's why I was going down that question.
Absolutely. And we can talk offline. There's been a lot of changes in the last five years to bring that level of service with the advanced EMT, um, even the basic EMT with the more treatments they're allowed to use now, and medications, to bring that a lot closer. Um, and we can have a lot of fun conversations about that.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Tuffinelli.
Well, I, I think we're missing a little bit of the, of the point here. You're absolutely correct. I don't disagree with anything you said, with the exception that copper is allowed to do what they're doing, because they have a contract with the current provider. Current provider, when we have a contract starting in June 1st, has all-inclusive of the area. There's a contract that they can sign, what they do with copper, to allow them to not transport, but use their paramedics. Simply if, if, if all the firehouses come under ALS and have qualified paramedics, they can't just go out and start doing it. They have to be in a contract with ALA to be able to provide that service.
Well, copper.
Well, with us, but still, that, that has to be done. Um, not just going out and qualifying everybody, so.
So, thanks for the explanation, Gary. I appreciate it.
Mr. Mills?
As an agency, we are very supportive of that. Again, we have a, a hybrid model in Stanislaus County that is one of, I want to say, very few in the state, where we have actually integrated fire into the EMS side of things. Um, so we are very open to, to that.
Mr. Mills?
The key point, too, and you, you haven't really touched on, but I wanted to clarify it, is, is that if you're a paramedic or an advanced EMT, if you don't have the gear around you, you really can't practice your, at your level. You, you practice to the level to which the gear is available to you to, to do it. So that means that having that license or that approval from Mountain Valley, or whatever, means nothing as a paramedic if you don't have the stuff to work with. That's, that's a key component here. So it's great to put all of these people and give them licenses, but if you can't put the, the gear next to the person, it means nothing.
And one, one other point, um, if that happens, and it's, it could possibly happen, hasn't happened yet, other than copper, um, and you can correct me, Lance, if I'm wrong, if, if you go down that road, and you end up with the contract, you, you'll have to provide a paramedic 24/7.
Sure.
So it's not just hiring one paramedic. You, you have to have at least a minimum of three, and possibly four, to cover in case they're sick or what have you. So it, it's kind of a big envelope that you're talking about here, um, as far as funding-wise.
There's, there's a, there's a lot more dynamics to it than, than initially on paper.
Correct.
Absolutely.
Right.
Thank you, Lance.
Mr. Doyle, could you please explain to me what LastPass is?
Uh, FirstPass?
I mean, FirstPass. LastPass, I use LastPass. I mean, FirstPass.
We got the discounted version of LastPass.
Oh.
So, um, FirstPass, as well as, um, the Compliance Utility, those are software packages developed by a company called FirstWatch. FirstWatch is the industry-leading surveillance software provider, um, within the country for sure, and I know they do international business. So what they do is, if we think of two different, um, goals that we're using them for, one of them is to monitor the compliance, right? Are the ambulances or fire engines getting to the scene in the time that we've put in the contract? Okay? So we integrate into the dispatch software, and it just runs behind the scenes. No one even knows it's there. And that allows us to pull data into our, um, software platform to show all of the calls and the, the, the compliance, right? So we don't have to rely on the provider saying, okay, I made all my calls this month 93% of the time, right? We have the raw data. We can do that, and it's, it's third-party verified. So that's the online compliance utility. We've been using that in Stanislaus County, I want to say, seven years now. Um, we are integrated now into Calaveras County, and we are actually doing training this week with, um, the two current providers for the compliance monitoring side. So we're going to be live, which is a huge milestone. It's taken years to get us there. We'll be live with the third-party verified compliance monitor in, um, you know, we're going live now. Now, the other side of that is what's called FirstPass, and that's the clinical monitoring side. So this company now has built modules where you can look at the clinical operations of your paramedics and EMTs in the field, because now we upload all of the, the patient care record data into the data, their database. So we can set up, with our medical director can set up, let's just say, we wanted to look at, um, aspirin administration for chest pain, which is part of our protocol. Um, we can set up a query, and it will monitor real-time if we're giving aspirin during a chest pain call. And not only does it allow us to print a report at the end of a period, you know, week, month, what have you, but it will monitor real-time. So if we have a call, a chest pain call, that there was no aspirin given, and we have it set up this way, it will deign our clinical person or our medical director and say, hey, this paramedic just ran a call and they didn't give aspirin. Do you want to look at it? Do you, so it allows us to see and monitor what's going on in the, in the field. And it also is passed through to the providers, because the providers are contractually obligated to participate. So now their clinical people will have access to their own dashboard, if you will, and they can, it helps with their quality improvement.
So, having remembered some of the ambulance timing, when you say there's 13 or 14 minutes or whatever on one of those, but the reality becomes at a certain point that that's not achievable, uh, how does, how are you managing that now? How CMS managing that now? Because they, they are fined if they don't, but I remember they were having trouble getting to Glencoe, or Gans Meadow, or somewhere. And they couldn't meet those times, so they, you would have to modify that? So where's that nexus?
So, yes and no. Under the old agreement, um, it was very difficult to monitor, because, again, it was all self-reported data. Um, we just don't have the, the reporting built into a spreadsheet, right, to really, I mean, you can do just simple, you know, report it off a spreadsheet, but how valid is that data? You know, years ago, the agency went to only validated data. And every decision we make now is based on data, but we know it's good data, right? So to answer your question, um, a couple things. One, we have what are called exemptions. So let's just use Gans Meadow, for instance. And, um, I believe Gans is a wilderness response, but let's just, for sake of argument, say it's a rural response, where you have to be there in 2959, okay? And normally, that's not a problem. But now we're in the middle of a snowstorm, and it takes me 40 minutes to get there. But we have an exemption that the provider can submit and say, it was snowing that day, we, you just can't make the call, and that's reasonable. So we just pull that call out of the OCU. But if we have habitual, where Gans Meadow, your example, and that provider is there habitually at 35, 40 minutes, well, it gives us the opportunity to, one, is that just not a realistic response time? Or two, are there issue, operational issues we can look at, um, to help that, right? Do we need to stop Dorrington? Because Dorrington's 15 minutes closer, right? So we can, it allows us to drill down, but ultimately, the provider signs an agreement to meet those response times, and there's penalties associated, and ultimately, there's breach language if we get that far down the road. If they just can't meet what we all think are reasonable response times, they're just not willing to do what it takes to make those response times.
Thank you.
There's multiple steps we can take to address.
The, the JPA board looks at response times semi-annually. Usually, there's a report given to us in June and December, whatever, and we actually go through all of them, make sure they conform.
And we can, as a side note, we can work, if it's the pleasure of this board, we can, I can supply that, that data. I can present it. We can put it in the consent calendar or whatever you like.
No, we have representatives. Nope. Not interested in going down that. I'm not. Mr. Mills, did you have something?
Yeah. You know, I, I listened to the medics on the conversation with dispatch, and, and you know that there's not, they're not oftentimes aware of where a particular car is
Yep.
in the system. But I also know in private business, 10 years ago, I could watch my vehicles working in Lancaster and Palmdale, sitting in an office in Stockton, or even here. Um, I would love the system to get to the point where, don't mess with my dots kind of thing, that you know exactly where those cars are, and whether or not they're actually going to something or coming from something. Um, that's, that's going to be a key component in the future to the success of the system here locally. And I would really encourage everyone to start, since it's already a proven technology, and it's done seamlessly using AT&amp;T or any of the wireless formats, that, that we start thinking about how we're going to do that, and be aware of where those cars are. It's, it's tough with the amount of outer county transports that we're doing, and we're doing a lot. I, I listen to some times where, you know, you got three medics gone. That's, that's huge, when you're talking about the amount of area that we work. Uh, so maybe it's a case of staging the transports, because you know this one's out, but coming back, and now we can start shipping something else. But we can't do that right now, because we're, our dispatchers are somewhat blind. They know that somebody went, but they don't know when they're back in across the line and able to be responsive to another dispatch. So that's, I just wanted to bring that up. I think it's, it's got to be looked at. It's a, as a valuable tool.
So I swear I didn't plant that question, but, and I glossed over it in here. So as part of the, you're trying to make me look good today, huh? Thank you. I appreciate it. As part of the RFP, the winning proposer, and we've already done this with that at its pass, um, is obligated to, um, invest in technology called, um, it's all based off of GPS, automatic vehicle located. Automatic Vehicle Locator. And we took it a step further with Mobile Data Terminal. So what that's going to do is exactly what Supervisor Mills had mentioned, is, um, they will be on the, every unit will be in dispatch's screen. And then in each individual mobile data terminal, they're going to see where the units are. But more importantly, they will be tracked. So instead of relying on, I'm just going to pick Evans Pass again, coming back up from Sonora and when they hit the county line, getting on the radio and say, back in the county, you know, available on the road. Okay, well, where are you? Are you at the bridge or are you in Murphy's? That's a lot of area. Now we'll be able to track those. And dispatch will now be able to, um, dispatch the closest unit and dispatch that through their terminal. Again, to help address the communications issues we have in the county because of terrain with the radio, right? So now we have another backup method of dispatching, uh, aside from the radio. And then taking that a step further, the Mobile Data Terminal, um, will allow all of the dispatch information to be downloaded immediately to the computer in the ambulance with address and all of that. And then also the notes that are put in by the dispatcher. Like, they might not want to go on the air with some kind of a safety-type note, but they can type it in and it's right there. So it's going to be more efficient for the dispatchers and it's going to be more accurate for the providers.
I have to say, it's pretty impressive where you're, where you are now as, as an agency. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Are there any public comments on this presentation? Hearing no public comments, um, just come back to the board. Mr. Doyle, thank you very much. I know, I appreciate it, having seen where you were and where you are today.
Mr. Tuffinelli?
I do have one question that I've been asked. Um, the November sixth notice of intent?
Yes.
Um, is that a public?
Yes.
Do you announce that publicly?
Yes. It will be posted to our website.
Pardon me?
It will be posted to our website.
To our website? Okay. And can you, um, give the address of the website publicly right now?
Um, nveems.org, I believe?
Yeah, that sounds, that sounds, that sounds correct.
It will be in, so we have a whole, um, we're calling it a portal, but it's not really a portal. We have a page that has everything RFP-related to it. You just hit that page and it'll be right there, the intent to work. And we'll also email the, um, the proposer, so they will have it.
Okay, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna-
And I'll send that to you as well, so you aren't blind.
Yeah, if you can, you can send that to me and this board, all the board. That would be great.
I'll send it to you before we post it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry.
And I've got to make sure, I got to look, I, I got to relook at your contract. I thought it was in there that you had to know immediately the website address, so. Thank you, Lance. Thanks for your presentation. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Doyle. Appreciate it. I'd like to ask, are the supervisors have any comments they would like to make on anything? Mr. Stopper?
Just, doesn't matter where you're at, who you are, gal and vote. Let, let your voice be heard. It's an important day.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mills?
Yes, Natural Bridge has been reopened with specific restrictions. And I attended the two-care conference over, the one in Sonora the other day on forest health and fuel reduction projects. Very informative.
Where did you go? Or was it just, huh?
Fairgrounds.
Oh, it wasn't a field trip?
No, ma'am. No. It was at the fairgrounds. We had various speakers come and, um, explain where they were and, and how they were in the pro- working in the process, federal as well as local.
Thank you. Mr. Tuffinelli?
Uh, I don't have anything to report. Well, I do. I have a COG meeting tomorrow, uh, five-thirty.
We do?
And so does Dennis.
A COG meeting?
A COG.
Oh.
It's a Zoom COG meeting. And, uh, I just want to say, um, good job, Madam Chair. You did a great job today.
Could you please make sure that's recorded? Okay, um, we are going back into closed session. We, um, had a closed session today of the Public Employee Employment with the Act, County Act Commissioner and Ways and Measures. Um, item two of the closed session has, we will not be having. We will be doing that at a later date. There was nothing to report on that. And on item three, we'll have a conference with legal counsel, initiation of litigation one case. Um, are, is there any public comments on the closed session? This board's going to adjourn to closed session. Ms. Hughes, thank you very much for today. You're welcome back. Thank you. We appreciate it and thank the Planning Department for lending you to us. We'll remember that at budget time. Okay, um, yes, we will take a five-minute break.
You can hear it. Correct. That closed session will be in here.